Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this work session of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District. We are officially called to order on Thursday, June 4, 2020. On March 16, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic and video conference meetings in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Accordingly, due to health and safety concerns, as well as the stay-at-home order issued by the county judge of Harris County, the meeting is being conducted by video conference. The time is now 6:01 PM. Board trustees present, Winford Adams Jr., Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, Dawn Davis, and myself, Rodney Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to mute their microphones unless speaking. Thank you. The next order of business is a review of the minutes from previous meetings. Does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the May 7, 2020 Board of Workshop Session, the May 12, 2020 Regular Meeting, or the May 28, 2020 Special Call Hearing none, these items will be submitted as a part of the consent agenda on the June 9, 2020 Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. Thank you. We would now like to hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse. Good evening, all trustees. It's great to see you all. I was actually thinking earlier today, I said, wow, I've seen you all probably more in the past three months than we've seen each other in a while, based upon the number of meetings we've been having. If you remember, this past week, we had a meeting with you all, and we discussed our calendar, in which we approved. Over the course of the week, I have gotten some feedback from some parents and teachers, some happy and some not so happy. And so one of the things I wanted to reiterate with you all today is traditionally, we've always taken the calendar out to our staff and our community for them to give us input. In fact, we did so this year with a calendar that you all approved prior to. But I think we all would agree that this situation is quite different than previous times, because paramount to our calendars changed this year is the pandemic that we're currently experiencing, and then all of the information that we're receiving from health officials at the local, state, and national level regarding the pandemic that is going to be coming back in the fall. And so to that end, I still would have recommended that we not take it out, because we have to do what we have in our core values is doing what's best for kids. And so, much like previous years, we know that we always take things to our community. We have coffee talks, listening tours, and everything. And so hopefully, as our parents continue to respond to their own personal needs, they also take an understanding that we're having to look at for the safety of, not only for our students, but the safety of our employees. And so to that end, I've, any feedback that I've gotten from any of the parents through Elevate, I've personally called each person and talked with them, given them our rationale and talking with them about all the opportunities it provides, while also listening to their personal concerns regarding not wanting their kids to go to school that long, or their summer trips or camps that they want their kids to participate in. I might have listened and understood that, but I've provided them an avenue for, at least for me to be able to listen and to give them feedbacks. I'll continue doing that as we move forward. Our team is working on a survey that we will be sending out to our constituents over the next week regarding the scenarios that we talked with you about to further gauge our parents' thoughts and feelings regarding if they're planning on sending their kids back and getting some of the calendar feedback. I've received emails from parents asking that their kid be allowed to stay home next year for at least the fall, because they're not comfortable with their child coming back with the possibility of getting the coronavirus. And so as I've talked with people, they are from one end of the spectrum to the other end of the spectrum. And so I believe that we've done the best thing to do what's best for kids and our staff, and recommending the calendar that you all subsequently approved. That does conclude my announcements for today, and I'll touch base with you about a few more next week on Tuesday. We do have several, a few presentations. Ann's going to come forward and talk with us about the budget. If you remember our last conversation with that as well, we presented you all with some options, and you let us know which options you all were leaning towards. So she'll be reviewing that with you a little bit more, as well as Julie, in her new role as the Chief of Human Resources and Human Accountability, she'll be working with you, but also Deion, working with the work calendar. And so we'll be going through those things today. And again, that does really conclude my announcements for today.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. And let me say thank you. The Board appreciates your reaching out to the community and to our parents concerning our calendar. We all heard from them and know that there was concern. So I truly appreciate your taking the time to reach our parents and community concerning our desire to do what is best for our students in Spring ISD. So thank you, and I know you will continue to talk to parents and community. Thank you. Our next item is the 2020-21 Budget Discussion. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrooks.
Thank you, President Newhouse, and good evening, members of the Board. I would like to share the screen really quickly, so we can... Get our presentation up here. Okay, so before we get into the 2020-21 Budget Discussion, I wanted to just touch bases with you all really quickly on what's happening with the coronavirus federal funding. And I know that you're likely hearing a lot about the CARES Act and some funding that's available for reimbursement for some costs, and so we wanted to review that information with you all. And so we are in acronym city right now. There's all sorts of acronyms. So I've given you here a little breakdown of what those acronyms are and what they mean. And so for starters, when we hear the CARES Act, that's the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. A new one that has come out, as we've received some additional guidance as to exactly how those funds will impact the district's budget, the latest one that we've heard is ESSER, which is Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And then the next one is the Coronavirus Relief Fund that we're referring to as the CRF Funds. So to start off with the ESSER Funds, those funds are the portion of the CARES Act that has been allocated to the states to help school districts with the funding losses that are anticipated as a result of the closure. And so for the state of Texas, Texas received about 1.3, just under 1.3 billion, and 90% of those funds had to be allocated directly to local education agencies. And so for spring, the portion of those funds that is allocated to the district is $9.4 million. What's really important to note with these funds is that they are not additional funds. Instead, they are the funds that will be used to hold districts harmless for any loss of revenue that we would have had due to the closure of the district. So basically, what happens is, is if our total allotment for the year were, say, $100, then we would receive $95 through our normal state aid funding, and then we would receive $5 from ESSER. So overall, our total funding would be exactly the same. So it's not additional, it's just to offset the state aid to ensure that we have full funding for the 2019-20 school year. So that's the first one, and we'll hear a little bit more about those funds when we bring the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to you all later, once we close out the 2019-20 year. So we're still receiving guidance on how to handle those funds and how we're going to account for them, but that's what we know for sure right now, is that they're not additional funds, but they will offset our state aid to ensure that we're held harmless for our total revenue for 2019-20. Now, the CRF Funds, which are the Coronavirus Relief Funds, those funds are additional funds to help offset the costs that the district incurred, as we were responding to the coronavirus pandemic and the closure. And so expenditures are allowed to be reimbursed up to 75% of the district's cost, and for expenditures that were incurred and obligated through May 20. So any expenditures that we had directly related to the closure in our response to the pandemic through May 20 can be reimbursed. Excuse me. And so we're specifically looking at our total costs, but ideally to reimburse the district for those technology devices that we purchased in order to make sure that our students have the tools that they needed for remote learning. So right now, our total coronavirus-related expenditures are just under a total of $5 million. And so we're able to receive up to 75% reimbursement of those expenditures, up to 75% of those expenditures. And then FEMA needs no introduction. We all know who reimbursed through FEMA are very limited, and primarily, they're just costs associated with the additional cleaning and disinfecting of facilities to ensure that we're reducing transmission of the virus and making our facilities a safe place. So those costs are what we'll have for FEMA, will have reimbursed through FEMA. And of course, anything that can be reimbursed through FEMA is not eligible for any other funding source. So we have to maximize each funding source individually. So if FEMA can pay for it, then FEMA needs to pay for it, and you can't claim it on CRF and so on and so forth. So I wanted to pause really quickly to see if there's any questions on those funding sources before we jump into the continued discussion of the 2020-21 Budget.
Ms. Westbrooks, is the FEMA funding ongoing? I don't see a term where it ends. Like, so CRF, that is through May 20, and the ESSER funding seems to be for expenses incurred, or for the budget impact in 2019-2020, but is FEMA going to continue to pay for cleaning and disinfecting of facilities?
For expenditures, as long as we're under the declaration of the disaster.
Got you.
Additional questions, then we will move into the Discussion 21 Budget. So at our last, at the last board meeting that we had, we discussed the stipends. And as part of the TASBY case study that was done, a portion of the study was to look at our stipends across Austin district. And that included some increases that were necessary in order to ensure that our stipends were within the market value for the surrounding districts that were used for comparison. But there was also what required a decrease in the stipend in order to adjust to the market value for that stipend. And so at the last discussion that we had at the last board meeting, you all asked if we would go back and come forward with a proposal for how we should address the proposed stipend structure that was provided to us by TASBY. And so this evening, the first thing we'd like to do is to go over the current stipend structure, and then the proposed stipend structure that we would like to put in place going forward, and receive some guidance from the Board on next steps. So the current stipend structure that we have, and this is for our, particularly our Performing and Visual Arts and our Athletic stipends. Our current structure allows for additional contract days that are provided for supplemental duties that are in addition to the amount of the stipend. Those additional days are also included in the base salary of the employee who has that supplemental assignment. And by including those additional days in the base salary, that also allows the additional days to be included in the calculation of any pay increases. So what that means is, is if you're a coach, and of course, you're a teacher first, so a teacher has a contract of 187 days. So if you're also a coach, and you receive 10 additional days for your supplemental duties associated with being a coach, your total base salary is for 197 days. And so if that total base salary of 197 days, which is inclusive of the additional days for the supplemental duties, if that's a total of $50,000, whenever pay increases are given, then you're giving a pay increase on that total amount, which is including the days for the supplemental assignment. So by doing that, by adding that value, the value of those additional days into the base salary, and allowing raises to be given on that amount, it has caused the district to be well outside of the market on several of our stipends, in nearly all cases, well above the market for those salaries, or excuse me, for those stipends. So what we're proposing that we do with the stipend structure going forward is to uncouple those supplemental days from base salary, and make an adjustment to the compensation manual down to the TASBY proposed stipend amounts. However, if an employee is currently an existing employee in the school district right now in 2019-20, then we would hold on making any adjustments to an existing employee's stipend amount. However, if we hire new employees in who would start with us beginning in 2020-21, then those new employees will receive the proposed stipend amount. And so that's a lot when we're looking at the current and when we're looking at the proposed. So I'd like to show you some examples of what that looks like in reality. So the first example here is an example of a First Assistant Band Director. And so under the current structure, this individual or an individual who is an Assistant Band Director is, like I mentioned, a teacher first. So they're receiving 187 contract days for being a teacher. Then they're also receiving an additional 24 days for being the Assistant Band Director. So an individual that's an Assistant Band Director has a total of 211 contract days that they're being paid for. The stipend amount for an Assistant Band Director is $8,100. So under the current structure, they're receiving the stipend of $8,100, and also for those 24 days, the value of those 24. So the total compensation that is being received for being an Assistant Band Director is $16,637. The market study that was done shows that the market value for an Assistant Band Director is $8,750. So for an individual under the current stipend structure who's receiving a total of $16,637, that is 190% of the market value for that supplemental duty. And so when we're, just as a note, when we're calculating, when we're looking at the market value that was provided to us through the TASBY case study, looking at 15 of our surrounding districts, that market value is inclusive of the cost of extra days that other districts are paying for those assignments. So if another district is paying additional days, then those additional days are included in this market value of $8,750. Okay, so in the same scenario, under the proposed stipend structure, an individual that is an Assistant Band Director would receive a contract of 187 days as a teacher. So they would receive just a 187-day teacher contract. An existing employee would, we would hold, we would hold on making any adjustments to their stipend amount. So they would still receive in 2021 the $16,637, but they would receive that amount as a stipend, that whole amount as a stipend, not as additional days that are added to their, to their base salary. However, any new individual that would come into the district since 2021 as an Assistant Band Director, the stipend amount for that individual would be $9,000. And that $9,000 stipend would include all supplemental duties and any extra days that are related to that assignment. And that $9,000 stipend, proposed stipend amount for a new employee represents 103% of the market value. Okay, so I just wanted to pause really quickly to make sure that we're all on the same page before I show another example.
I have a couple of questions, but I think I can wait until you've done all of them before I ask them, so I'll wait.
Okay. So that's an example of an Assistant Band Director. So I want to give a similar example on the athletic side. And so this is an Assistant varsity football coach. Under the current stipend structure, they receive 187 days contract for being a teacher. They receive 10 additional days for being the Assistant Football Coach, for a total of 197 total contract days. The stipend for the Assistant varsity coach is $6,250, and the value of those additional contract days, that 10 additional days, is $3,759. So the total amount being received for the supplemental duties is just over $10,000. The market value for the Assistant varsity football coach is $7,750. So that $10,000 total that's currently being received for the supplemental duties is 129% of the market. So then the proposal is the same as, the same methodology as before, is that now the contract days that are is calculated on 187 days. For an existing employee that's in the district in 2019-20, they would continue to receive that just over $10,000 amount for the supplemental duties, but instead of receiving it as a part of their base salary, they'll just receive a stipend for $10,009. However, for a new person, a new Assistant varsity football coach that's coming into the district, beginning in 2021, would have a stipend amount of $8,000, and that $8,000 would be inclusive of all supplemental duties and any extra days related to that assignment. And so the $8,000 amount represents 103% of the market. Okay. So I'm pausing again for questions, because the next example is a lot more straightforward than the last two that we've addressed. Okay, so I'll move to the next, the next example, which is slightly, it's different, because this one is increases that are necessary. So again, looking at the market, comparing our current stipend structure to the proposed stipend structure, and we're looking at, for example, the academic decathlon advisor is currently making a $2,500 stipend. No days are involved with either of these. Then the proposed stipend is going up. So the intent here is to make sure that we also show the flip side of it, and that's that some stipends are increasing as a result of the TASBY case study in areas where we were below the current market. So that is our recommendation for how 2021. And so it's very, it's very important to note that we're requesting to hold on any adjustments for existing employees, however, still reserving the ability to come back at a later date and adjust those existing employees over time as well to the proposed stipend structure.
So then, can you go back one slide, or yes? Backwards, or to the, to the, to the decreases?
Yes.
So you just addressed my, one of my question, which is, how long are we grandfathering or holding, because it's not really grandfathering, because you're changing the day structure, but how long do we intend to hold them for? And then the second question, I'm trying to formulate this properly, so bear with me, but let's say, go to the other example, the band director. So this is for a First Assistant Band Director. And so let's say, for the sake of argument, there's a position, a Second Assistant Band Director that's below a First Assistant. And so I presume their stipend would be structured the same way. The amounts would be less, but it would be structured the same way. It occurs to me that a Second Band Director who is currently employed with us would make more than a new employee who's a First Assistant Band Director, just because of the way this is structured. I don't have an actual example in front of me, but let's just say that the stipend amounts were $1,000 less, they would still come out to be paying higher, an existing employee being paid higher than a new employee who comes in as a First Assistant Band Director. And then also, any current Second Assistant Band Directors would be disincentivized to get promoted to First Assistant, or would prefer to keep their current pay rather than move up and then take less at $9,000. I just, I wondered if we had sort of factored in scenarios like that in the district.
I'm sorry, I was pausing, I thought Dr. Watson was talking.
Yeah, so, so we didn't talk specifically through that scenario, because the question really is, I think in our previous conversation, when you all asked us to come back and look at this, is how much do we want to do all at one time? And so instead of leaving it the way that it was when we got the recommendation, we came back and said, okay, if we go ahead and uncouple the contract days, and any new people coming in, we go ahead and bring that into an alignment with the TASBY study. And for this year, let's not discuss the other, which would give us time to continue to look through that and decide what we want to do with your recommendation. Or if it was you all's recommendation to go ahead and do all of it all at once, of course, that's, that's, that's up to you all to be able to do that as well. But we thought this was a way to begin bringing things into an alignment without doing it all at once, and not using the term grandfather that would suggest we would just leave it forever, but that we would have an opportunity to come back and look at it again.
Thank you.
I would like to comment that I think as a body, we're doing the right thing. I applaud the district in providing us with the staffing study that we received from TASBY, and it brought to light opportunities that I think we need to address. And so this, this is not always easy. There are areas where we have been extremely overcompensating, as well as almost double-dipping in some respects in how we were managing our stipends in those additional days. And so as we move And so as we move forward in correcting those, making sure that we are staying competitive in the marketplace by remaining above the market value in the decisions that we make so that we're still staying competitive and taking into consideration our existing employees and not burdening them, you know, initially with that change. And so I think there, you bring some good questions forward, trustee, um, Adams. But I think there's always going to be unavoidable consequences as a result of making any adjustments to a staffing budget. And so this is probably the, the, to me, the, the lesser of what could have been something difficult. We're trying to be good stewards that we've been elected to be of the finances of the district and the taxpayer dollars. And as we're being good stewards, we're also taking into consideration our existing employees and not impacting them, especially during a time where we're in a pandemic and there's a lot of change going about. So, um, I like what you've brought forward. We ask you to, to share this with us and I appreciate it. Thank you.
The only other thing that we talked about that you all may want to consider working on over the next year, even through governance, is looking at those thresholds. You've heard Ann talk a lot about the proposed stipend is at a hundred and three percent of the market, for example, or the past one was at a hundred and ninety percent. We might want to look at those thresholds and have you all set those thresholds because we have great employees and in these areas we've done well because we have great employees. And so to keep that, if we want to stay at a certain percent of the market, we could continue to bring this back to you all on a yearly basis, because I think it's what you all asked for us to regularly do the survey. We could bring it back to you and so we can keep looking at them to make sure that we don't slip down, that we stay competitive. And I think we are still competitive at a hundred and three percent of the market. But we stay competitive to, um, to keep our employees, but then also to be able to attract new ones, to your point, Justin.
So for, for clarification and just making sure we understand the guidance going forward, are we moving forward with this proposed stipend structure, knowing that it will cause to Mr. Adams' point that it will cause some short-term inequities? And then we'll bring forward this item in, in each budget cycle going forward so that we can determine when is the best time to make the adjustments or make any changes with existing employees? Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I, I'll confirm that that's the, my understanding is what we, we, there, there needs to be some work. Cause we do need to keep this as equitable as possible. And if, if we're not monitoring it and, and checking in on it regularly, you can get out of whack, which is like, kind of what looks like has happened to us. And you end up with these sort of upside down salary structures and we don't, we want to avoid that. So yeah, I think that's about right.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on from that. And so I wanted to pause here for just a moment as we're about to make sure that we're on the same page and we have our understanding of our guidance for the finalization of the two thousand twenty-one budget. And so as we're looking at our pay increases, even given the circumstances that we know that we're in with the overall economy in the state of Texas across the nation, that it was very clear that we still wanted to have our competitive pay structure in place and that that was still a number one priority for the district to remain competitive so that we could recruit and retain high, highly qualified employees. And that we know that we're going to have some extremely high, continued extremely high expectations for our staff going into this next year. We're asking a lot of them, more of them than we've had to in the past. Specifically with switching very quickly from a traditional instructional format to a remote learning format. And going into two thousand twenty-one, not a hundred percent sure instructional format will look like as we're still working on those scenarios and bringing forth options to the board. We know that our expectations are going to be high. And then of course, ultimately, everything hinges upon our student outcomes and knowing that that is our most important thing and that's making sure that we provide high-quality learning for our students in spring ISD. So with that, we brought some options forward at the last board meeting. And we looked at three different options. We said, here's a competitive option that allows the district to move back into the competitive realm with our surrounding districts as far as our teacher salaries go and providing some equity adjustments where needed throughout the compensation plan. Because we know we have some areas where we are below the market as well. And so we also looked at a possibility of having a, a less costly but comparable salary structure. And then we looked at a targeted one, which would only benefit, um, teachers at the market range. And you all were very forthcoming and said that we want to remain competitive. And so the option that you preferred was the competitive option, which had a total price value of nine, nine point one million, has a starting teacher salary of fifty-six thousand five hundred, provides for a two point five percent general pay increase for all employees and has the equity and market adjustments as mentioned within the TASB pay study. And, and as I stated, it includes all staff. So with that, the estimated total hit to fund balance for this budget would be just under six point seven million dollars. And so that is what we've, we're moving forward with. And that's the guidance that we received from the board. So we will develop the budget that will come to you all ultimately on June twenty-third for the public hearing with these numbers built into that budget. So this is just a
This, Wes speaks before you move on, if you can go back. I, I do want to just share that I'm still struggling a little bit with where we are landing, even with the competitive option. I know we're looking to bring, um, us up more in line to be more competitive. But as we make these increases, so are other districts. And so I don't know if you all have heard of what other districts around us, especially like districts that are similar to us in demographic and size and what they're doing, because I'd hate to, to do this and then they exceed us because we've had that experience in the past and we still end up at a lower range of this payment, payment scale and we're not competitive. So I'm, I'm just a little concerned around that. If you could speak to it a little bit.
Most districts right now are being very cautious with sharing information. And part of that is because they're all grappling with the new reality that, that we're dealing with as well. And so we've only heard or seen information from a handful of districts and it is all over the place. There's no one set like we haven't heard. Most people are giving a one percent or a two percent. Everyone's doing something slightly different. And of those, I believe only one district in the surrounding area has officially passed their budget. So it's still just thinking through it and they're still working through some iterations and some options. So we do not have a lot of data right now as far as what our surrounding districts are doing.
I do know in addition to that, we do have our spring reward program that would be in addition to that, that we know how that would fold into, um, remaining competitive and where that would land us and, and what that impact brings to fund balance.
We do know that the spring rewards program was always set to be a, a, a fund balance, a use of fund balance in order to do that. And so we have not ran the latest numbers, especially this year since we didn't have testing. But, um, I want to say the last time we looked at it, it was somewhere between five hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars was the cost to that, but that will change drastically depending on what the, what the testing looks like this next year.
I just want to say, I, I share your concerns, Justine, about, you know, other districts passing their budget and, and then us, you know, not being competitive. But I'll, I'll say this is sort of something that maybe I hope helps you is that, um, it's, if, if we undershoot the mark, we can come back later and make an increase. If we overshoot and get ourselves in financial difficulty in terms of our first rating, it's really hard to claw back money that we have committed to for our staff. And I wouldn't want to do that. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with sort of dialing this up gradually and taking more of a wait and see so that we, we really hit our mark.
That is helpful. Thank you. Um, is there a way to share the potential for the spring rewards along with what we're presenting so that when it's shared with our employees in the community that they understand that this is not, there's opportunities for, for more reward than just what you see here? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. It's the starting salary of fifty-six thousand five hundred with an asterisk. That says that you could receive more and here's the details of the spring rewards program. Yes.
Yeah, because I think they, they have the potential to receive an additional, what is it, anywhere from two to five thousand based on that program. So
An additional four thousand dollars if you're a teacher.
An additional four, right. And so let's, let's kind of incorporate that in some way. Uh, if my colleagues agree with that.
Thank you, Justine. I, I agree with that and thought about that. And, and looking at Ms. Westbrook's presentation here, I remembered reading an article, uh, just today in the paper saying that the districts are looking at anywhere from one to three percent, uh, increase. They didn't name any districts. They just said surrounding districts anywhere from one to three. So when I saw your two point five, uh, Ms. West, Ms. Westbrook's, I said, wow, we, we are in that range and we are close. And so I kind of agree with Winford that this is a good number here for us to work with, to share with our employees. We do want them to know that we appreciate them and how much we value them, even though at the same time, we're going to tell them what high expectations we have of them this year when we give you this new pay increase. We are still expecting great things from our faculty and staff as well. And we're still expecting our student outcome to increase. So in fairness to all, I think this is a good number as well.
And President Newhouse, I think that's how adding the spring reward information highlights that message that we are still, we want to make, remain competitive, but we still have high expectations in, um, what we expect for our student body.
Exactly. Yes, thank you.
And it drives home the point that spring rewards is based on measurable student outcomes. So how, high expectation for measurable increased student outcomes.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
As I remember it, it is also on attendance. Yes, you don't get into the running if you have a certain number of absences you need to, I guess, unexcused types of, uh, absences.
That's correct. That's the first criteria for or less absences. That's right. Okay. So we'll move on and just look a little bit more at, um, what that structure looks like that we're looking at for the teacher pay going into two thousand twenty, twenty-one. So this is some information that was provided to us during the TASB pay study. And so it just shows the years of experience that our teachers have. And you can see here that we are heavier on the zero to ten-year range of experience with our teachers, with the average teacher in spring ISD having about eight years of experience. So with the two point five percent general pay increase with the starting salary of fifty-six thousand five hundred, this is what our proposed new higher salary schedule would look like. And so you can see it's starting with the fifty-six thousand five hundred. And for a teacher that's currently in spring ISD in two thousand nineteen, twenty, and they're in their first year of teaching, their salary right now is fifty-four thousand dollars. With this two point five percent general pay increase, they would receive an increase of seventeen hundred dollars, which is the two point five percent, and also an equity adjustment of one thousand. So their total increase would be two thousand seven hundred. So their two thousand twenty-one salary would be the fifty-six thousand seven hundred. So what that does is right now, the current market median for the starting teacher salary is fifty-five thousand seven hundred, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. With our starting salary of fifty, of fifty-four thousand, we're currently at ninety-seven percent of the market for our starting teacher salary in comparison to the market average. With this increase, this two point five percent increase in the equity adjustment, we would be at a hundred and one percent of the two thousand nineteen, twenty market salary. So that's to say that if everyone gave a one percent increase, then we would be right on target. If anyone gives more than that, then of course we fall behind. Or if anyone doesn't give a raise, then we're, we're right in line with them or a little bit higher. So it also allows for, like I mentioned, the equity adjustments throughout the scale. And it improves the consistency of the pay within, and you can see the two hundred, the difference between the steps going through. So it's helping with some consistency with the, this, in between the steps. And for, and I know this was a concern last time that we looked at this was our teachers who have more use of experience, starting teachers after doing the two point five percent. However, with our higher level of experience, like for example, if we look at the five years, that median of fifty-seven, nine forty, currently we're at ninety-five percent of the market. But after making this equity adjustment, we would be at ninety-nine percent of the two thousand nineteen, twenty market for teachers with five years of experience. So that one, at five years, at ten years, fifteen, et cetera, we're closing the gap. But we're not quite there yet as we are on the short, on the lower end of the teacher experience scale. So making progress, but not quite there. And so I wanted to make sure to explain what those numbers mean and how this pay increase would help move us in the right direction, but we still have some ground to make up in the future. The other point to note is that this information is in comparison to the hiring schedule. But we could have teachers, and we do have teachers that are in spring and have been in spring that may be at about that ten to fifteen year mark, and they actually make more than what's listed here because they've been with spring through those years of performance-based increases and other increases that were given over the years. So this is the hiring schedule amount in comparison to the market, not necessarily what our individual teachers are making.
Thank you for that clarification.
That's all I have for you this evening. Of course, if there's any questions, please, please share those questions because we're taking this information and this guidance that we've received from you this evening. And we're beginning to do all the detailed information behind that so that we can have the budget posted to the website for June thirteenth for the public to see what that summarized budget is. And then of course, we'll bring it back to the board on June twenty-third for the public hearing and the passage of the two thousand twenty-one budget.
Ms. Westbrook's, just, just for my own, uh, clarification. So what this means is, uh, I just want to run a scenario. So let's say I'm, I'm moving to, uh, region four, um, from another region. And I've been teaching for ten years, so I have ten years of experience. Which means if I move to spring, my starting salary would be, my, 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 my year moving into spring, I would make fifty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. And so the, our neighboring districts, we're not where they are yet. So right now, if you So right now, if you have a choice between a position here, one of our neighboring districts, I'm not going to name anybody specifically, we're not paying as much. Is that, I just want to be clear that I understand that.
That's true. Yes. And we, and it's on average, we're not paying as much. We could be paying more than some and less than others, but on average, you're correct. We're not paying as much. Okay. And that's all that I have for you this evening, this new house, for the budget item.
Are there any other questions? Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Westbrook's. We appreciate this. Thank you. Our next item, I'd like to recognize our Executive Director of Community Engagement, Dionne McKeithen.
I'm promoting him to panelist right now. He should be popping in. There we go. Mr. McKeithen, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
We sure can. We can see you too.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Uh, good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and other members of the board. Uh, wanted to bring before you an item on tonight, um, which is the twenty twenty twenty-one work calendar. Um, last week, the board approved our twenty twenty-one instructional calendar. And so wanted to now be able to present to the board a few changes uh, based off of that approval for last week with the instructional calendar based off of our, now for our work calendar. And so hopefully the board has in front of them, uh, the, uh, the work calendar for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. And there's only a few items that I wanted to bring to the board's attention on tonight regarding the, uh, the work calendar. And that is first, starting on page three of the work calendar. Um, based off of what Ms. Brett, uh, Westbrook's talked about tonight in regards to the uncoupling of the stipends, uh, we did, um, go ahead and shift, were able to shift our work calendar just a little bit um, due to the uncoupling of the days, uh, from the stipend. And now we're able to reduce, um, our work calendar by three calendars. So no longer will we have a two hundred and two day, uh, calendar, two hundred and nine day calendar, and a two hundred and fourteen day calendar. Um, so we were able just to go ahead and reduce those calendars that we would typically have in the past because of those stipend days, um, that we were adding to the, um, the hundred and eighty-seven day teacher contracts. Um, also on page three, I wanted to let you know that um, we are elementary assistant principals, uh, there's a change to that calendar. Um, what we were doing here is we're aligning our elementary assistant principals as far as the days of their calendar. They were, they were a hundred and ninety-eight days. Um, we're actually moving them to the new calendar for two hundred and seven days, which is the same as our middle school assistant principals as well. Um, many of our principals, um, were, gave feedback that they needed to um, have our elementary assistant principals, um, in the building to help plan, close out the year for, um, and, and they needed to work more days and, and they really needed that support. And so we were able to, uh, go ahead and make that change uh, for elementary, uh, school principals by changing the elementary assistant principal calendar, uh, to two, two hundred and seven days. All right. And then the last change, uh, will be found on page, uh, seven, uh, of the document. Um, working back with, uh, um, Chief Miranda, uh, regarding the transportation and child nutrition. Uh, they were, uh, ultimately on a hundred and eighty day calendar. And so with the, uh, new instructional challenge, uh, calendar changes um, and the support for our new environment coming up for the twenty twenty-one school year, um, there was a need for, uh, to be able to add some additional days there for professional development um, that our staff is going to need in order to operate in that new environment. And so our transport, for transportation, our bus drivers and bus aides, uh, their old calendar was a hundred and eighty days. Uh, we're changing their calendar to a hundred and eighty-six days to allow for that additional, uh, professional development, uh, opportunities for them throughout the year. Um, and then child nutrition, uh, our food preparation, uh, training specialists and manager assistants, their old calendar also was a hundred and eighty days, and we're changing their calendar to a hundred and eighty-five days. Again, we'll give them additional, uh, training, uh, professional development opportunities throughout the year uh, in order to support our new environment for the twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one school year. Um, and that is really all the changes, uh, to the work calendar. Uh, all other, uh, items in the work calendar, um, are, are, are standard and, uh, no, no major changes outside of the ones I just discussed with you. Um, but if you have any questions, uh, more than free to answer those at this time.
This is Kelly. I had a question. I'm sorry. And I might have missed this. Excuse me. I've been all over the place the last couple of weeks. But do you have a title change? I missed something.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, all right. I, I, I'll, you know, I'm not surprised. I always miss things. Okay. Well, congratulations, I, I guess. I don't know. How did I miss that? I'm sorry. I missed that.
Mr. McKeithen, could you offer, um, a little bit more of a detailed explanation of what the intercession days mean for, uh, our staff?
Um, actually, um, I believe if I can, uh, uh, punt to, uh, Dr. Hina Hosa, I think she can give you a very good explanation of how those, uh, intercession days will be used, uh, for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Dionne. And yes, Mr. Adams. And we are definitely working through that as this is a new understanding for all of us. But for our, um, employees, it's based on their calendar days. So for example, our teachers that are one eighty-seven, the intercessional breaks, those days, they are not on duty. Um, however, principals that are two twenty-six, they are on duty. So it depends on the amount of your days, if you are on duty or not. Um, so we had some employees that were two hundred and seventeen, uh, days. They will be on duty, um, for part of the intercessional days. And so depending if it's used as a rolling, um, closure and we actually are on duty, uh, students are all on duty or in class, uh, remote learning. Our teachers would be on duty. If it is an actual intercession um, and we only bring, bring back, uh, identified students for interventions or accelerations, then our teachers would be paid extra duty play, pay or supplemental pay to work with those individual identified students for the just-in-time remediation or acceleration.
Thank you. That is, that does clarify that for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. H.
Dr. Hina Hosa, um, I, I know that you know more about this than I do, but I've been to sessions of schools that, uh, or school districts that have year-round calendars. And they said they have no lack of, uh, teachers wanting to, uh, work those intercession times. So, uh, is that what you're hearing?
Well, definitely. And I know, um, we looked at the calendar from Socorro ISD and, um, Joe Espinosa, the superintendent, they've had that calendar for almost ten years. And what he has, his experience, number one, is definitely the teachers are very eager um, to work during those intercessions because you are allowed to focus on the students that are in need. And of course, they've seen great improvement, academic achievement. Um, we're seeing that right now as Chief Bradford, um, works on coordinating our summer learning. We have had a lot of teachers respond, um, to be able to work during this, um, uh, summer learning opportunities that we're going to be having in June and July. So, uh, our teachers are eager to support as well as the other professionals that we need for the summer learning activities. So yes, great response.
Well, then this question goes back to, uh, uh, Ms. Westbrook's. Uh, will this be, this extra money be a stipend or will it be extra contract days?
They would be paid as extra duty pay. So there's a set hourly rate when our teachers are working off, off-duty hours with our students. So they typically receive thirty dollars an hour for that time. So we would pay it as extra duty pay.
Very similar, um, Dr. Jensen, very similar to what, um, our schools, what we do now is, um, if they're working Saturday, you know, we call it Saturday school or after-school tutorials, very similar, pay structure would be very similar to that.
Any additional questions?
No, but I wanted to plug one more thing in there really quickly. And we utilize our funds, our Title One dollars, our federal fund dollars that are for our at-risk student population. That's an excellent use of those funds to provide that supplemental tutorial and intervention services to our students as well as our Safe Comp Ed funding, which is also for the same at-risk intervention supplemental services. And those dollars are already included in the campus's budget for those, for those purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook's. Uh, do we have any other questions? Thank you, Mr. McKeithen.
Thank you, ma'am.
For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Executive Chief of District Operations, Mark Miranda.
Yeah, hi. Thank you, President Newhouse, members of the board, Dr. Watson. Um, I'm going to be on page twenty-four in your agenda packet. And so I have actually two items to bring before you today, this evening. Uh, the first is the second GMP for our summer projects. Um, last, uh, month, I believe we, we approved the first GMP for that. This is the second and should be the final GMP for the summer work that we're doing. Um, quite a few projects that are going on in the summer. This is a second GMP in the amount of three fifty-nine, two seventy-one, um, for that summer work. Now be happy to entertain any questions on that.
Which projects are those that?
Sure, yeah. So, um, we brought the projects forward last month and they include Spring High School's Nader Torium, Westfield High School's JROTC, Bhamel Elementary Schools, um, Phase One of pre-K work to be able to do the, the K eight at Bhamel. Um, and then some work here at Gordon Anderson up in the CNI area. And then we also have some earthwork that has to be done behind Sawyers to help with the, um, grading behind the campus over there at Sawyers.
Okay.
To protect the neighborhood.
This aligns to the projects we discussed last time.
Yes, ma'am. If there are no questions, then this next item is on page twenty-six. This is the approval of the amendment to allow Camelot Education Texas LLC to continue providing the mandatory DAEP services for middle and high school students who've committed disciplinary offenses that require mandatory alternative education programs. You should have received the supporting document, um, in your, in your new packet as well. And so you'll have that supporting document with you. The, um, the length of the contract is from August first, first, twenty twenty to July thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-one.
Mark, uh, in, in looking at this packet, I saw that, uh, we kind of made some changes as, I guess, as I remember from last year. We took into the account that Camelot was not as productive, I guess, between March and May this year. And so in case we have problems like that in the twenty twenty-one school year, uh, we made some adjustment and to how we will be paying them and what we will be asking them to do and consider in working with our students when they are not actually on the campus there.
Yes, ma'am. We took into account the, the, yeah, we took into account the possibility of learning in an E, uh, virtual environment like we have been these past several months. And so you'll notice there's an Exhibit B that we've attached to this amendment. Um, I want to thank Dr. Hina Hosa as well for, um, helping to negotiate that out. And so we've added things like the social emotional report, support, the academic support and the transition and parent support. Um, and really bulleted out specific things that we want to see from Camelot if we're assuming and if we are in, um, a virtual environment again in the fall. Um, and then there's flexibility to that. So we definitely plan to, um, hold them to that and the accountability for the money that we are, um, expending with that contract.
Good, good.
Yep.
Um, have we done any work around, and if I missed it, um, or talked about going out for, um, an RFP around looking at, to see the opportunities for others?
No, not, not at the moment, no.
How long have we been using Camelot?
The whole time.
Yeah.
No, we, we were with the HCD for a time.
I see Dr. Hina Hosa is unmuted, so I'm going to let her jump in here.
Yes, so we did use, um, Harris County Department of Ed, um, High Point. Um, the district had, had High Point for a while. And so now it's been, this is an amendment to our contract. We've had, um, Camelot for the past five years.
And that's correct. And Winford, one of the things, uh, one of my passions was to get the Richie Academy up and running because of, um, High Point, our kids came back, um, behind and they weren't receiving the services that we have been able to get with the relationship with Camelot. And, um, I, I just think at the time, we've met with several different organizations. When we opened up Richie Academy and we settled on, we made the decision, it was the settlement, we made a decision to move forward with Camelot. But I think after five years, it may be time to look around and see what's out there, what's available, uh, maybe for next year to, um, start exploring, um, how things have innovated and moved forward just in the last five years.
I agree. Um, I also would wonder, um, if, if we might look at opportunities to develop that capacity within our own staffing. Um, I, and whether that would be a cost savings or not, I don't know. But I agree, it was something that we should be evaluating. So where is that?
Yep, those are all definitely things we can take into account.
Absolutely. We definitely have conversations about that often. Um, I think we've had opportunities to go out and visit other sites that offers slightly different services through Camelot. Um, but one of the things always taken to place for districts that have these, that they run themselves, um, sometimes this is the most at-risk, um, students, um, in the district. And oftentimes they have extreme difficulty finding, uh, teachers and administrators to work in schools of that nature. Camelot has, does have a niche in terms of recruiting, um, individuals that specifically want to, um, educate and, 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 um, educate students, um, that are high risk. And so, um, in my experience, that's been the big issue in districts. Yeah, it is cheaper for districts to be able to, um, do that. Um, but when you look at all of the wraparound services and the expertise that's needed, sometimes it's been difficult to find teachers to fill those positions. And Camelot has a national network where they're able to look locally as well as nationally, um, to bring people in to, to do that. So we'll definitely take your, um, recommendations and go back and begin looking, um, for the following year. Just trying to find out what else is out there.
Right.
But it has been difficult, I know, difficult to find. We know that sometimes in our, in our own schools, it's difficult sometimes to find teachers, um, in certain places. So we, we'll definitely take your recommendation and look into that.
And I do know one of the things that I was originally very impressed with Camelot is how widespread they are and, and what that brought to the table. They will work with several districts and not just in Texas, but across the country. So they know what they're doing. But after five years, I think it would be hopeless to see, you know, what's still out there and if they're still our best option.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Ms. Durant. I truly agree. I had an opportunity to visit Camelot when we were first looking at them. And they are very impressive, but they're not the only ones there. And we don't want them to get too comfortable and thinking that we will automatically renew every year. We want them to know that we need them to be competitive in cost-wise and services that they offer to us. So yes, we do need to look and see who else is out there. Thank you.
And one of the things that I most, one of the things is from a tech, from technology. School's changing, you know, and we want to know who's kept up with that change because that's what we really need to be focused on. That's, that's really what's driving my thought behind, you know, how competitive they are they from a digital perspective in the changes that we're seeing in education right now? And is there someone else that's doing it better?
That's good.
Virtual.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. So for our next item, I would again like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Anne Westbrook's.
Thank you, President Newhouse. And our items in this section begin on page twenty-eight with the group term life insurance. And so we're at that point in the year where we started reviewing all of the district's benefits and are preparing for open enrollment, which typically kicks off in the month of July for the next year. And so one of the items that was brought to our attention because of the anticipated increase in costs was group term life insurance. And group term life insurance, as you know, is a benefit that's typically offered by employers such as the district that would pay a death benefit to the beneficiary of an employee in the event of their, their passing away. And so right now, and for several, several years, Spring ISD has offered a group term life insurance benefit that is the equivalent of one point five times the salary of an employee upon their death. And that's a benefit at no cost to our employees that is, that is paid by the district. And so as we're gearing up for the renewal of this insurance plan, it was brought to our attention that based upon the claims to premium performance over the last three years in plan year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and twenty nineteen, we've had a negative claim to premium, which means that the claims that the plan paid on behalf of the district and its employees was more than the premium that we were paying for the plan itself. And so because of that, we're looking at an increase of forty-eight percent to the premium for this group term life insurance. And so that at forty-eight percent increase. And naturally, when we see an increase of that nature, we pause and we take a look at the plan and we see, you know, what's causing it and, and what do we need to do moving forward? And so with doing that and speaking with our representative, we, we did learn that the current plan that we have, which pays the benefit of one point five times the annual salary of an employee, is not aligned with any of our surrounding districts and that our benefit is far exceeding what most districts pay for group term life insurance. And so what we did this evening is we brought some options forward to the board for you to consider. And we're actually requesting a decision this evening because we are in the, in the midst of open enrollment and preparing for open enrollment so that we can stay on schedule. We are requesting the board to take action. But we have in front of you on page twenty-nine, the color-coded sheet that you have there, provides some options. And so just to kind of explain how this is set up. So if you look under cost options, you see in blue, that's the current cost that the district is paying. So the first, or excuse me, the second column, the district paid annual estimate. For our current plan this year, we're paying four hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That's how much the district is paying for the benefit that the district provides to the beneficiaries of its employees. The number beside that, the three hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and four, that's the amount that our employees are paying themselves for a voluntary insurance that they have selected for themselves. So for, so an example of that is an employee of Spring ISD could choose to have additional coverage that they pay one hundred percent themselves. They could choose to have a benefit on their spouse. And so they would pay a hundred percent for the amount of that insurance that they have on their spouse. So that three hundred and ninety-one two is the premium that employees are paying for voluntary insurance that they've chosen above and beyond the district's plan. So that's what we're paying currently. The yellow represents if we were to keep our plan exactly the same way it is now, which is that benefit, that death benefit of one point five times the salary. To renew that plan as is would be six hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars for an increase of two, two hundred and twenty-two thousand. So in this scenario, the cost for the employees, the voluntary cost would remain the same. The reason, the difference between when you'll see the, the voluntary insurance going up, it depends on the decision of whether or not the district is assuming all the risks for the entire plan, which includes the employer benefits as well as the voluntary benefits. Or if we share that risk plan and the voluntary plan. So that's the difference that you'll see in the cost on the voluntary portion. Okay, so the yellow is option one, keeping everything the same. And you see the, the cost increase. The pink is option two, where we're keeping everything the same, except we're spreading the risk between the, the employees voluntary and the district's portion. The green is changing the district's plan and moving from the one point five times the employee's salary as the death benefit to a flat fifty thousand dollar benefit for the loss of an administrator. An administrator would be a principal, director, or above position. And a twenty thousand dollar for all other active employees. So you can see the cost for that in green is two hundred and forty-two thousand. And then for the employee side, the voluntary side, we're assuming they're going to keep the same election. So the cost would be the same, the three ninety-one. So in the green, for this change in a plan, it would be a savings of two hundred and eighteen thousand. And of course, no change in cost to our employees for the voluntary. The next one is the light shade of purple. And so it's the same as the green. The only difference is the spread of the risk and whether or not the district is sharing that risk with the voluntary plan or if the district is taking on the full risk. So the dark purple is yet another option. And that's just a thirty thousand dollar benefit for all employees. So the cost for that is three hundred and forty-one thousand. And that's a savings of a hundred and nineteen thousand compared to what we're currently paying. And then the orange is again, the exact same option, but spreading the risk between the district and the employee plan. So that explains the options that we have available. And then the next information at the bottom is the surrounding districts. So you have that comparable information to, to see where we compare and where the options that we've provided would, would land the district in comparison to our surrounding districts. So we're asking for your guidance and your option that you prefer. And we can use colors, if we want to use colors, to say which option we're referring to as we walk through the discussion and the decision point.
Can you help me understand the surrounding districts as it aligns to us? Klein, for example, you said fifty thousand versus the ten.
Yes.
Align to our, what's the color up there? Our, um.
It would be closer to the green and the light.
Green, okay, to the green, alright. So Klein and Katie are closer to the green. Aleaf, who's more comparable to us in size and demographics, is more in line, well, it's not really, really one there, is it?
Not, not truly an apples to apples, but it would be fairly close, fairly similar to the green as well. A little bit more, but similar.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I was looking at that correctly.
It'd be useful to have all the in this for comparison's sake. So this, this forty-eight percent increase is based on three years of sort of being upside down? Is that what I understood you to say?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Ms. Westbrook, can you just?
Go ahead, just see.
No, I think that was Jenna.
No, it was Kelly. And, and I'm trying to get a, I'm trying to get an understanding of the upside down. I must, can you explain that meaning, upside down meaning?
Meaning that
Paid out?
The plan paid more in claims than we paid in premiums. So for example, that, okay.
Okay, I got you. Okay, okay, thank you.
So I'm going to express a little frustration. So I have a sort of a visceral, like resistance to insurance generally, one of my biases. But you know, I imagine in the three previous years, they made money hand over fist on our backs and they weren't running around offering us a forty-eight percent rebate. And so it, to my way of thinking, and like I said, this is my bias, they should, that, that's what they're in business for. And probably next year or in the subsequent three years, it won't be that way. So I, I like that we offer this extra benefit, this one point five times benefit to our employees. It's just my personal stake. It's, we're, we're coming up short in some other areas of compensation. And so to me, anywhere where we can sort of be ahead of the curve and beat out our competitors at, at a cost of relatively small cost of two hundred and twenty thousand extra dollars, I like that. One and a half times for many of our employees is significantly more than fifty thousand dollars. And so that, there's my take on that. I'll listen to anybody else's.
I agree with Winford and I, I, I just detest insurance. I think it's the biggest hustle, legal hustle in America. But I, I agree. And when you first started talking about it, I was thinking, is this something that we offer? Is it like an incentive? Is it something that, that may sway someone from going to another district? I don't, I don't know how we promote it and if it's included, you know, and promoted in that incentive package or not. That's just, you know, how I feel. But, but I, I would appreciate it. I know that, if I had that offer to me.
I agree with both of my colleagues, all the way around. And I'm in healthcare, not insurance, even though it can be a hustle too. But I, I think this helps us. I, I think, I like the yellow. And I think it gives us an opportunity for our HR department to market us in saying, we offer our incentive programs. We offer more than our surrounding districts do from a term life insurance perspective. I think it can be part of our incentive packet to encourage and increase the amount of competition we offer for our neighboring districts. So I'm, I'm on board with, I would prefer the yellow. And I agree with Winford, that's a small amount to pay to stay competitive and to, to offer our employees something that shows and demonstrates we value and appreciate them and want to continue to support them as best we can.
Good evening. Excuse me, can y'all hear me? Can you hear me? As a former employee at a district, you guys excuse my voice, I'm going through a whole lot right now. As a former employee at a district, I agree with my colleagues. You know, when I was working for a district, I was, that was a good incentive that we all would look at. Then in September timeframe, during open period, we have to go and do our benefits. So we are with, that was a good incentive. And you know, in, being a former employee, some of my colleagues at that time, always if, you know, look at their, they are, that's something that was great. So I, I read my colleagues on that. And I'm sorry for my voice, I'm really sorry.
That's quite all right, Captain Davis. And as a past teacher, I understand where you're coming from. It does make a difference. And knowing that my district cares enough to pay a life insurance policy like this for me means a lot too. It shows that my district does care for me. So do we have any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion. I think Ms. Westbrook said they needed an answer tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions?
If you're ready for the motion, Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the group term life insurance benefit offered to Spring ISD employees. And again, we're referencing the, the, the option that was highlighted in yellow in the packet here for the record.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Winford Adams, second by Donald Davis, that the Board of Trustees approve the group term life insurance benefit offered to Spring ISD employees. I will now poll the bowl, poll the board for their vote to approve the group term life insurance benefit offered to Spring ISD employees. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Jana Gonzalez.
Aye.
Donald Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, vote, vote aye. So the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook's. Will you please continue with your other items?
Yes, ma'am. And the next item begins on page thirty. And it is a monthly report of our actual financial expenditures. And so the board receives a copy of the monthly financial report each month through the board update. But three times a year, we bring it to the board to do a presentation of it, give an opportunity to talk through the report itself. And we provide that opportunity here this evening. And we're looking at the April month end. So this is our general fund summary of actual revenues and actual expenditures received and incurred through the end of April, as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty. So there's three pages. The first page is all revenue. And it's broken down by the source of revenue, so local, state, federal, and other. And of course, our local revenue is primarily our tax revenue. State is our state aid through the foundation school program. Federal is primarily the Shar's reimbursement, which is school health and related services for Medicaid eligible expenditures. And then other sources of things such as auction proceeds. If we auction off some expired items to the public and we receive funds for that. So our total general fund So our total general fund revenue received through April thirtieth was two hundred and fifty-seven point five million. And we still had sixty-seven million left to be received, and of course, that's largely our foundation school program. Because we received payments all the way through August for this fiscal year, so that's the, the large portion of what's left to be received. On page two of the report is our expenditures, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I did not realize I wasn't on mute, I didn't have a question.
Okay.
I was listening at the dog.
Okay. On page two of the report is expenditures incurred through April thirtieth of two thousand twenty. And it's broken in, it's the same information shown in two different formats. The first is by function, so you can see which functional area the expenses incurred in, for example, instructional. Transportation, that sort of thing. And then the next is by object, which is, we, we speak in terms of major object groups, so you've got payroll. Supplies and materials, contracted services, et cetera, so it's broken down into two different. Views of how you can see our total expenditures were two hundred and sixty point three million. And we had four point one million encumbered, which means a purchase order's been issued, the funds have been obligated. But they haven't, the payment hasn't actually been made yet, that's, that's an encumbrance. And then on the third and final page is a comparison of both the revenues and the expenditures. At this point in time, eighteen nineteen compared twenty nineteen twenty. Now we see some pretty large variances this, this time around and under in the. That's specifically because of House Bill three was a significant impact on the way we're funded. So with property taxes, you can see that we've, we've. At this point in time, at the end of April, we've actually received less property taxes than last year. And that's even though we had higher values, but we had a much lower tax rate, we went from a dollar six in twenty eighteen nineteen. To ninety-seven cents per one hundred dollars of value, so we see that, and then on the state aid, we see a large increase. Compared to the amount of funding that we received last year of eleven million dollars, and that's because. We're receiving more in state aid, less in, in tax revenue. And then on the expenditure cost, we see the variance in payroll, and of course, that's due to the raise that was given. And, and also the supplement, the one-time supplement that was given. Now in comparison, we also gave a one-time supplement in twenty eighteen nineteen, so we see the variance between the two and payroll. So that's the report of actual revenues and expenditures as of April thirtieth. And as mentioned, if you'll be on the lookout in the board update, we send this report out every month so that you can just see how revenues are coming in. And how expenditures are going out, we spend a lot of time at the board meetings discussing budgets. But this is actual, and so it gives you that opportunity to see how things are trending throughout the year.
Ms. Westbrooks, I had a thought, and if this isn't something that's. That you can speak to now, uh, let me know that. But as we look at um, our changes and our variances and things that have occurred. Is it possible for you to kind of walk through this a little bit and see where we are looking at potential risk? Um, with the current pandemic in the state, we already know payroll is going to be a challenge. But are there other areas that you maybe can speak to, I know you don't have a crystal ball. But you have a lot of experience that we value, so can you speak to that a little bit for us, especially since we're currently in the budget process?
Absolutely, state aid and property tax revenue, those are the two areas of, of biggest concern right now. State aid for two thousand nineteen twenty, you heard in the budget presentation. That using the funds, the ESER funds that are a part of the CARES Act is we're being held harmless. For ADA fluctuations due to the pandemic closure for twenty nineteen twenty. Going into twenty twenty-one, we're, we're a June thirty fiscal year in, so there's, there's a lot of decisions that have not been made. And likely won't be made, um, before we pass our budget. So the biggest concern there is, is how will TA decide to fund ADA for next year? And so specifically around blended, blended learning. And so everyone knows, it's, it's a need, it's a desire to provide some form of remote learning. Opportunity for our students that are, are afraid to come back to school or unable to come back to school as a result of the pandemic. And we're, we're yet to find out exactly what that funding formula will look like. Under those circumstances for next year, we've, all school districts have made it abundantly clear, uh, TAs, they're very aware. Of the concerns and the need for that information, and I was on a, a call at four o'clock this afternoon. With some surrounding districts and some of the guidance organizations that work directly with TA. And everyone's asking the same question, we just don't have the answer yet. So as far as state aid goes, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a pretty hefty concern. But as mentioned earlier in the budget process, we're having to move forward with what we do know. And then making sure that we're aware that there's, there's still unknowns. Um, property tax collections is the other, and we, we did build some conservatism as we always do into the budget. For a property tax collection, but, and we've seen years with sluggish, um, collections for various different reasons. This is unprecedented, and we just, quite frankly, we don't know what collections look like. So those, on the revenue side, those are the two absolute largest concerns that, quite frankly, I think is keeping all of us up at night. Because we just don't know what next year is going to look like, but we're leaning into it. We're, we're, uh, building our projections based on what we do know, building in conservatism where we can. And, um, just staying to the information as it becomes available.
And then on the expenditure side, I think we're doing all we can from staffing perspective and, and as well as, um. The zero-based budget process and keeping down, you know, costs where we can.
We're having robust conversations, cabinet continues to meet daily. And we're having conversations just like the discussion we had just a moment ago, as we were bringing forth the Camelot Amendment. You know, where, where are opportunities, same reason we brought the group term life insurance forward. Where are there opportunities for savings, and then we're, we're going through that process to see, does it make sense? Um, there's contracts that we're scaling back on because it, the services that they've provided in the past may not make sense going forward, you know? So it is a continuous conversation, and we're having the same conversation surrounding vacancies as well. Dr. Watson asked us, is that position, do we need to fill it right now, is it necessary? We're, we're having those discussions each and every day to keep control of expenditures, because right now, that's the only thing we truly can control.
Right.
One of the other things that we also are doing is, um, we're having, we're looking at existing contracts, especially our long. Term multi-year contracts to determine if they're yielding what it is that we expect for them to yield. Having conversations with Jeremy to determine whether or not we can get out of the contract, if it's not, and then what are the ramifications? To possibly bring you all recommendations when we don't feel that it's in the best interest of the district to continue.
Good, okay, thank you, that was helpful.
Ms. Westbrooks, could you give us a couple of examples of what goes in the other operating cost bucket? Like what, what does that look like?
Insurance is one of the largest costs that's included in that category.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, property insurance, and, and this, for this year of that six million, that's budgeted about two and a half million is, is for insurance cost. Transportation cost is another, um, pupil, student transportation is included there. So those are two of the big bucket items that's included in other operating costs. Okay. If there are no more questions on the financial update, then we'll move to the next item, which is our monthly report of taxpayer refunds, and that's on page thirty-four. Now just ask if there are any questions on the list.
It's large, but that's normal for this time of year.
It is. And it is large, it's a fact. Okay. So moving to our next item, which is the monthly report of cooperative purchases, that is on page thirty-eight of your packets. And we only have a few items on here, and of the four items, we have two that are bond related to, with technology. And with our, um, student locator system. For transportation, so both bond items, we have, um, the last item is the devices. So it's the actual payment for the technology devices that we've spoken about of the last couple of board meetings. Okay. Move to the next item unless there are any questions, and that is, uh, we have the request for proposal for before and after school childcare and enrichment services. And so this was an item that was brought forward to the board at the May board meeting. And we had one particular vendor that was brought forward for a recommendation for award, but there were some questions and some concerns. And since the last meeting, we provided some additional information to address those questions and those concerns. And so we're bringing the vendor forward again, as we feel as though they do meet the requirements that are necessary to provide those services to the district. And so I wanted to see if there are any remaining questions, our remaining concerns, and if, if there are, then. We'll do our best to address those, and if not, then we'll, we'll have this item on the consent agenda for Tuesday.
So I was the one that had those questions, and I did receive the email with the explanations of. How we were categorizing risk, and so I am satisfied, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, and that also provided us with an opportunity to ensure going forward, and you'll see on the supporting documentation for the RFPs. Where we, it made the fonts smaller, but we included, you know, what's included in those evaluation criteria, so hopefully that's helpful when you're reviewing in the future. So we do have two additional requests for proposals this evening, and the first one is for school health and related services. And it's for the consulting company that we use that assists the district with billing. Um, training and assisting with any audits that we have, so school health and related services. The, it provides us with a reimbursement for Medicaid eligible, um, services for certain health-related services that we provide. To our students that are in the special education program. And so of course, to be eligible for that reimbursement, a, a child has to be Medicaid eligible under the age of twenty-one. In the special education program and have an individualized education plan, the IEP, in place. And so the request for proposal was to find a vendor that would provide us with that consultation services for billing, training and, and audit. And we went through a two-phase approach and qualified the vendors in phase one. And we took the top four scoring vendors to phase two. And in phase two, the vendors were required to come forward with the presentation. That was, was heavily focused on the services that they provide, how they would help increase our reimbursement that we receive for Shar's. And the billing system that they use and just present their overall, um, value of the services that they could provide. And so with those four vendors, we've, um, brought forth the recommendation to move forward with frontline education. To provide the Shar's reimbursement going forward.
Who was the previous vendor?
So for many years, we had, we were working with Tasby for, for many years, and then over the last two years, we've used MSB. Let me see, and we call them MSB all the time, let me get the name, oh, they're actually called MSB, MSB Consulting. And so we've used them for the last two years, and so we, we've had some challenges with, um, their services, some challenges. Quite a bit, and so we decided to go out for RFP to look for a different vendor. And so that's the process we went through, and they did respond, but we've decided to, um, change to a different vendor that, to provide those services for us. If there are no further questions, then I'll move to the last item, which is on page forty-six. And this is a request for proposal for mental health support and intervention. And we took the, the request for proposal, and we had several respondent, responding vendors. To this request for proposal, but we used eighty-five percent as our cut score. To determine which vendors we feel are capable and have all of the qualifications to provide the services. And it's really important for our counseling team to have a lot of options for mental health services. And so we're actually recommending that we qualify fifteen vendors to provide those services. And then give our counseling and our school teams the ability to choose from one of those vendors. That best meets the needs of their campuses and, and whatever, um, situation we're dealing with at that time.
Ms. Westbrook, sign on, mental health speaks directly to, um, student success along with safety. And I, I know we now have our, um, director, and she's been doing a fantastic job with some of her tweets throughout the pandemic. What are? What, with what we're providing, and what I'm trying to ask is, do we have what we need? Do we really, are we sufficient in what we need to support our population of students? And do we need to expand on what our ask is for what they offer? Are our counselors and campuses able to get what they need timely, um, to support, uh, our students?
Um, I'm going to defer to Dr. Hannah Hosa and let her speak as that's, that's the team that she supports. You want to take that one away?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Durant, and as you know, when you look at the vendors that have qualified, we have had the opportunity. Through the different grants that we received to be able to, um. Tap into these services, once the grants start, um, expiring, we definitely are going to need, um, these vendors. And so I believe that right now, through our federal grant, we, um, received Title Four. And the bulk of the money as a district, we've directed to mental health and the supports. So I believe right now, we are, um, where we need to be, but of course, we continue to monitor. Uh, the need out in the field and continue to work directly with our counselors to provide them the supports that they need. To be able to respond to the students, um, experiencing trauma or crisis. And approving these, um, vendors here will definitely address what we're seeing in the schools right now.
Do we have any gaps around what we offer and what we're experiencing?
I think, you know, one of the biggest challenges, um, that we've experienced is students in crisis. Um, and what we've done is through our grant with, um, UT Health as well as Baylor. Um, we've been able to respond, and the other big, um, I think partnership that we've made is through our police department. And Chief Colberth, his staff have also been trained, and so it's a, it's a triage approach. Instead of just the counselors responding or just the administration, we've got the school, the mental health department. And then our, um, police department that, you know, together, all three teams, uh, providing the wraparound services for the students. Um, and so we are preparing, I'll tell you, that's part of the discussion, um, that we're having, you remember Ms. Dunn Oldfield talking about the scenario planning that we're doing? Um, that's a big piece that we are going to, you know, we talk about sitting in the scenario, really studying what it's going to look like when we come back. Um, whether we come. whether we come back face-to-face or we come back remotely. This pandemic has impacted so many of our families and thus the students, you know, thus the children. A lot of unemployment that is out there. Our high school principals will tell you that many of our students have had to work because their parents have been laid off and they've been taking, you know, odd jobs just to help the family. Many children have been left at home while their parents are trying to, you know, go to work. And so we have seen and we believe that when we come back to school, when the school year starts, we will have to deal with the effect of this pandemic and the economic situation that our city is in, in right now, that the nation is in right now. So we are preparing. Dr. Zimmerman and her team are part of the scenario planning. And we want to be able to address it and, and to the very best of our ability. It's all unknowns, but to be prepared to respond.
And Ms. Durant, we also have the Title Four funding that has a component that includes mental health specifically. And so we have certainly been finding ways to maximize that funding. And there are a couple of requests for additional support positions that's been laid out for the next year to help address the needs. And like I said, luckily, we're, we're able to explore that opportunity using title funding, that additional federal funding.
Yes, with the pandemic, the unrest, the changes, I, I think our kids are going to need more support. So I, I'm just asking as a board, do we have gaps? Are we, do we have what we need to support them in that area? So, uh, thank you. What I'm hearing from all of your responses is that we're, we're positioned well to support our kids. Thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If there are no additional questions, Ms. Newhouse, that concludes our items.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. And thank you to our board for tonight, working with our cabinet. And at our board meeting, we had real good discussion tonight. We do not have anything else on our agenda. Since there are no other items, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn the meeting of the Spring Eastern School District Board of Trustees.
It's been moved by Kelly Hodges, second by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. I will now poll the board for their vote to adjourn the meeting. Winford Adams.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Jana Gonzalez.
Aye.
Donald Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, vote aye. The motion carries unanimously. There is no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned at seven fifty-three PM.